The November 26 Village Board Meeting, would you please stand for the Pledge Allegiance to be led by Trustee McClafferty?
The Pledge Allegiance to be led by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, this evening we'll be starting with Trustee Kozneski.
Here.
Maher.
Here.
McClafferty.
Here.
Stigowski absent Stapleton.
Here.
Blatter.
Here.
Okay, great. Next up is the consent agenda. First off, the approval of minutes from the October 22 Village Board Meeting along with the November 15 Village Board Meeting, special meeting minutes. Also, we have the approval of dispersments, a resolution authorizing the Liquor Control Commissioner to rebate certain license fees, a resolution approving a professional services agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Blatter seconded by Trustee McClafferty. Do we have any questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, Kozneski.
Yes.
Maher.
Yes.
McClafferty.
Yes.
Stigowski absent Stapleton.
Yes.
Blatter.
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Next up, on the Mayor's Report, we have a truth in taxation, public hearing for the 2017 proposed property tax levy. Need a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by Trustee Blatter seconded by Trustee McClafferty. Those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Chris, can you comment, please?
Yes, well, this is for the 2018 tax levy. This is, we discussed the amount that we wanted to levy on October 15 at the Committee of the Hole. The property tax levy is for $3,467,970. It's approximately, it's 3.79% higher than last year, and it has to do with growth, growth in the community. And basically, we don't have to do a public hearing, however, for transparency purposes, the Board has historically done a public hearing. So this is a public hearing for the tax levy. I do want to mention the police pension portion of it. We did, I did put in a number, and Ed Mansell is going to be here at the Cow to discuss his request for the levy, but I did put in their request in there.
Okay, so out of the, you said 3.9%?
3.79%.
3.79%. Do you have a breakout as far as how much is growth versus?
Well, we're allowed with the, with the, with the property tax laws, the caps, we were allowed, I think it was 1.9%, we were allowed for the CPI, and then the remainder is growth.
Is pure growth, and growth as defined as new people moving in, more infrastructure, more.
Yes, occupancy, I look at, we review all the occupancy permits.
And the number one cost driver as far as percentage wise goes to the police pension, is that correct?
50% of it goes to the police pension.
And what is the percentage increase? Do you have that on the police pension?
On the police pension, it is actually 7.7%.
7.7.
It's about 63,000, the total is 126,000, there's a total increase, 63,000 of it is the police pension.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions or comments? Okay, need a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee McClafferty, seconded by Trustee Blatter. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, next up, under the Mayor's Mention, we're proud to have School District 113A here tonight. They received the 2018 Governor's Hometown Award for Haunted Central, which was, again, this award was for 2018, but is based on the event that took place in 2017. Their Board is here tonight, we're pleased to have them here, and we thank them for coming out. Not only did they receive the Governor's Hometown Award, but they also qualified as one of the four finalists for the Governor's Cup. Unfortunately, they did not bring home the cup, but the Governor's Hometown Award will be proudly displayed in our community. Represents one, School Districts 113A dedication, collaboration, and community involvement. So again, we are happy and proud of this award, and we appreciate all the efforts that you did. Before we present the award, I'd like to read a description here from the reception, the award reception brochure. It says, "Haunted Central opened its doors on October 27th and 28th, 2017 to raise money for the District 113A Educational Foundation and Hope and Friendship Foundation in Lamont. Transforming central school, which has been closed since 2012, into haunted house, took weeks to complete, but was well worth the time and effort of over 200 volunteers. It is truly a collaborative community event involving School District 113A staff, numerous business, local business leaders, Lamont High School, the Lamont Fire Protection District, the Lamont Park District, our Police Department, and members across the community. Haunted Central raised over $18,000 in ticket sale profits and hosted more than 2,000 guests over the two-day event. The proceeds from the event funded innovative educational programs through the Educational Foundation and helped local families in need through Hope and Friendship Foundation." Again, the award took place in 2017. We have the Board of Education with us here tonight. I understand that the planning originally happened on a napkin, and I understand it raised a great deal of money for Educational Foundation and Hope and, for the Hope and Friendship. This event not only obviously helps our community, but it's a lot of fun for the community and is a great event. So again, if I could ask Damon and the board, entire Board to come up, as well as Courtney and whoever else you have here that was part of it, love to get a picture here by the sign and present a plaque to you.
Okay, there we go. We have a certificate of recognition here that you could proudly display.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, okay, you welcome to the chair, over. All right, no take trouble. Tee, tee.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on, the Mayor's Mention here, we have quite a few pages here, so we're going to go through this quick. There are many holidays activities taking place next, this month, as well as next month, and I'll share some of them with you. You can always find them on our website, Community Calendar, at lamont-il.us. The Downtown Merchants Alliance is kicking off this season with lighting up Lamont with the decorative lighting display on Main Street just east of Lamont National Bank. The display is sponsored by our Downtown Merchant Alliance as well, and Artistic Holiday Designs. So be sure to stop by during the holiday season and visit the Decorative Light Display and Artistic Holiday Designs Building right around the corner on Stevens Street. That is all lit up. We thank them both for helping up, for helping out lighting up Lamont. Again, this is all funded through the Merchants Alliance as well as Holiday Designs, so we appreciate all their efforts. This Friday, November 30, St. Patrick Church will hold a Christmas concert at 7:30 PM. They are located right on the corner there on 200 East Illinois Street. You can call 630-257-4640 or visit stpatricklamont.org for more information. Also, throughout December, Hope and Friendship Foundation will be collecting donations of personal care, cleaning, and paper products to create care boxes that will be delivered on Christmas Day along with fully cooked Christmas dinners. Drop off donations of personal care, cleaning, paper products to bins located in the lobbies of Old Quarry School, Lamont Police Department, Lamont Township Office, and/or Starbucks. And that needs to be dropped off by Friday, December 21st. Also, on Saturday, December 1, Lamont Park District will host Breakfast with Santa from 9:00 to 11:00 AM at the Core. You can register online by November 28 at lamontparkdistrict.org. Also, a neighbor-to-neighbor holiday vendor and crafters market will be held on Saturday, December 1, at the Lamont Township Community Center on Elba Street from 9:30 AM to 1:30 PM. To benefit the Lamont Township Family Assistance Fund, please email terryoneal@lamonttownship.org with any questions. Also, new this year, the Lamont Police Department and the Lamont Tractor Club, we do have a tractor club, they're teaming up to collect toys for those in need in our community and beyond. On Saturday, December 1, Tractors for Toys will be at various locations around town from 3:00 to 7:00 PM to be collected and donated, as well as unwrapped toys. They will be at Target Plaza in Covington Knolls North Park from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. They will be at Derby Plaza by Three Corners in Quarry Pub and Grill from 4:30 to 5:30 PM on Saturday, and Hometown Holiday in Downtown Lamont from 6:00 to 7:00 PM. We hope you can support this great cause and drop off a donated toy at one of these locations this Saturday. Hometown Holiday will be held on Saturday, December 1, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM in downtown Lamont with children's activities, a Kris Kringle Market shopping, horse-drawn wagon rides, and much more. The tree lighting ceremony and Santa's arrival will be at 5:00 PM at the Budnik Plaza. Photos with Santa will take place at Diggs on Canal. Again, that's the new restaurant that was reopened, it's under the Diggs name, which was previously Sweetwater Deli, that will take place until 7:00 PM. The Downtown Merchants Alliance, along with participating merchants, have a basket full of goodies that they are raffling off for free to one lucky winner. Please check that out. You could visit participating merchants during the Hometown Holiday on Saturday, and you will be given a raffle ticket for a chance to win a basket of goodies located in the Kris Kringle Market. Also, on December 1, we have a lot going on on Saturday. From 3:00 to 8:00 PM, the St. Matthew Lutheran Church will host an indoor nativity scene walk featuring vintage, contemporary, and antique nativity scenes at the Parsonage House next to the church. Free will donations will go toward restoring their historic outdoor nativity figurines. Please visit smlclamont.com for more information. On Sunday, December 2, the Annual Frigid 5K and Candy Cane Kids Dash takes place at the Lamont Park District from 8:00 to 10:00 AM. You can register and visit at the Park District website. Also, the Lamont Historical Society will hold their Christmas Choral Concert and Holiday Cookie Sale on Sunday, December 2. From 1:30 to 4:00 PM, Santa will be there from 3:00 to 4:00 PM. For more information, visit lamonthistorical.org. All right, we're on page three, the last page. Lamont High School will hold their Band and Choral Chamber Holiday Concert on Thursday, December 6, at 7:00 PM in the Performing Arts Center. Their Band and Choral Large Ensemble Holiday Concert takes place on Thursday, December 13, in the Performing Arts Center. Again, please visit their website, lh210.org. The following Saturday, December 8, St. Matthew Church will host a Christmas Cookie Walk from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM in their gymnasium. Fill a box of home-baked goodies, including cookies, fudge, and candies, will be sold by the pound. You can call them at 630-257-5000 with any questions. Also, on Tuesday, December 11, River Valley and Old Quarry will hold their choir concert at 7:00 PM at Old Quarry Middle School. You could visit their website at sd113a.org for more information. Lamont Park District will host a free senior holiday luncheon from 11:30 to 1:30 PM on Tuesday, December 11, with holiday music, a catered lunch, and bingo. You could register by calling 630-257-6787, or visit the Lamont District website. Getting to the end here, Hope and Friendship Foundation will again be putting together Christmas dinners on December 25. They need fully cooked food items dropped off on December 25 at Old Quarry Middle School between 11:30 AM and 1:30 PM. Dinner items will be sorted and packed from 1:30 to 3:00 PM, and anyone can help deliver care boxes and food from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. You can visit Hope and Friendship Foundation for more information. Again, all these events can be found on our website, Community Calendar, at lamont-il.us. Also, please be sure to patronize our local businesses for our holiday shopping. Again, when you send, when you spend money here in Lamont, 1% of the sales tax comes back to the community. So definitely have a lot going on in the next couple of weeks, hope to see everyone out and about, especially this Saturday, you have quite a few things going on, so please make it downtown if possible. Last but not least, want to give an update. The Home Rule referendum failed to pass this past election. We really appreciate everyone coming out. We had record turnout, obviously, it was a big election with the governor's race and several of the other races going on. I think we had, what, almost 6,700 voters in the village. Again, we wanted a true taste of what everyone thought about the Home Rule referendum. We heard it loud and clear, and again, we appreciate everyone's feedback. All feedback is great feedback. We need that, we need to, obviously, we still have an issue. We still have a million-dollar-plus shortfall with our capital projects and water and roads. So again, Home Rule was, was the first option. We have other options. Some of the options include potentially going to referendum on just a 1% or some percentage sales tax. Other options include raising property taxes, potentially maybe doing a separate referendum for that. And the other options are, you know, basically raising the rates that we have to deal with, and those include mainly vehicle stickers and water rates. Again, you know, from a village standpoint, we want to share this burden, this million-dollar burden, with non-residents. That's why we originally went with the Home Rule referendum. That Home Rule referendum would have included a 1% sales tax and our ability to tax trucking and diesel, future diesel sales. We cannot do that under non-Home Rule. So that Home Rule referendum failed, we move on to the next step. Again, we want us to be able to share this burden with non-Lamonters, people that shop outside of Lamont, if we do a 1% sales tax. Again, that would be something that would be funded by non-Lamont residents. So again, we need to talk through that, we will talk through that more during our Committee of the Hole meeting after this, but bottom line is, we appreciate everyone's feedback. The thing is, is that we haven't fixed the problem yet, and we, we will be sending out more communication, we'll have a newsletter coming out, you know, what are the next steps we need to do to plug that hole? But again, as I said, appreciate everyone coming out to vote, and stay tuned, we'll be discussing more in our meeting following this. With that being said, last but not least, I've been told that it's someone's 50th birthday today, that is Trustee Ken McClafferty. Ken, is it really true you're 50 years old?
No.
You don't look like you're 50.
I feel like I'm 50.
Okay, happy birthday, Ken, so. With that being said, that wraps up that part of the Mayor's Report. Last but not least, we have the audience participation. If you'd like to come up and speak, please do, please come up to the podium, and if you could please write your name down, that would be much appreciated as well. Do we have anyone here from the audience? Looks like we do not, so with that being said, we will move on to the Clerk's Report. Charlene.
Okay, thank you. The first ordinance that passed this evening will be O-58-18, and this is annexing to the Village of Lamont approximately 1.8 acres of land located near the intersection of 131st Street and Archer Avenue in Lamont.
Okay, need a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Trustee Blatter, seconded by Trustee Kozneski. Jason.
Thank you. This parcel is located just south of the Target near where 135th Street enters Archer Avenue. It's now contiguous to the Village with the annexation that we completed with the Will County DOT, or DOT last month. This just adds to acreage in Will County there as part of the Homer Glen boundary agreement. Be recommended.
Okay, thanks, Jason. Any other comments?
If I could just add to that, this'll also continue to assist us on bringing that gas station to that area as well. They received approvals at our last Board meeting, and it's just another annexation that falls in conjunction of the area. Thanks again to Homer Glen, thanks again to Will County, and actually, thank you to the Lamont Township Highway Commissioner as well. We've been working with them on a route for our utilities to bring to the site. They've been very, very helpful, and we should be able to work on that project through the winter and hopefully break ground sometime next year to install water main to that gas station site. So just thank you to everybody, we've worked with a lot of good intergovernmental cooperation, and we hope to announce that sometime next year. Thank you.
Yeah, I just echo George again, really appreciate the Township's cooperation with this, as well as Homer Glen. Again, this is our ability, we've worked with Homer Glen to share in a 50-50% sales tax share. We will be annexing land into Lamont to provide water, and, you know, again, we need more gas stations on the south side of town as well as the central part of town. So again, this will help facilitate that. So again, appreciate everyone's cooperation there. With that being said, any other questions or comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Kozneski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McClafferty?
Yes.
Stigowski absent Stapleton?
Yes.
Blatter?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. Okay, next up, resolutions?
The next, yes, the next item would be a resolution, and it would be R-61-18, and this is authorizing the purchase of rock salt.
Okay, Ralph, do you want to comment on this?
Yeah, sure, thanks, Mayor. Every April, cities and towns contact the Illinois Department of Central Management Services to allocate the amount of salt they think they're going to need for the upcoming winter. This year, I allocated for 3,200 ton, which is lower than the previous year, and we didn't receive the price of salt until the first week of October, which was just over a month ago. So that price per ton was $15.33 more per ton than the previous year. So the number you see here, the $225,753.60, is a number where we can purchase 20% more than we allocate it, if we need it. We don't need to use that total amount. The total amount we need to use is $188,128. So staff recommends the approval of the resolution for Cargill Salt to provide us with salt this year.
And Ralph, I always ask you this, but again, this, this pricing, this, I mean, we got this bid late, this has nothing to do, it's no fault of Lamont, and it's, it's basically, it's a, it goes through the state, correct?
It goes through the state, and the reason we allocate early is so the state can get the amount of salt into the region that it needs to. When you get into the winter, sometimes they can't get the barges to float up the river, so you're stuck. The northern Illinois area wouldn't have salt in the region.
Right.
So that's why they do it so early, but the price doesn't come out until later.
And the price is dictated by the state, not?
Yeah, it's a.
It's not, it's nothing we negotiate.
It is not.
Yeah, just to clarify. Okay, great. Any other comments? Okay, roll call, please.
Okay, I don't know that we had a motion. No, we need a motion.
Oh, we need a motion.
So moved.
Okay, all right, motion by Trustee Blatter, seconded by Trustee Kozneski. Roll call.
Okay, Kozneski? Krasniewski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McLafferty?
Yes.
Stigowski absent Stapleton?
Yes.
And Blatzer?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved.
The next item would be Resolution R-62-18, and this is approving Northview Park Plaid of Consolidation. That's located at 1115 McCarthy Road, Lot Consolidation.
Okay, need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee McLafferty, seconded by trustee Maher. Do we have any questions, comments on this? Okay, roll call, please.
Okay. Krasniewski?
Yes.
Maher?
Yes.
McLafferty?
Yes.
Stigowski absent Stapleton?
Yes.
And Blatzer?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved. All right. Okay, thanks, Charlene. No village attorney report, correct? George, administrative report?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. One, one quick item, just wanted to remind residents, if they haven't already done so, to sign up for the village's online polling system. You can find that on pollco.us/Lamont. Again, we've been trying to get our subscriber count up over the last few months, and to get to a certain level where some of these questions, the results can be, can be valid, and we can really draw some conclusions for how the community feels about initiatives, projects, how, how we're doing as a village. We have close to 400 subscribers now, which actually, for a town our size, is pretty good. I'd like to get it up a little bit higher. As the mayor mentioned, I mean, we have only a few opportunities every couple of years for, for a true referendum on the ballot, whether it be binding or advisory. This is something we can use throughout the year to ask for input on projects, and also how they feel about, about our service levels and other initiatives that we're, we're operating. So just a reminder to sign up for, for that system. And then lastly, I just jogged my memory, and Public Works does such a great job, but as we approve the, the salt allocation for the year, Ralph, just want to say congratulations and thank you for all the hard work. You and your staff have done this about as early as we've ever had a storm like that over the weekend, but Public Works did a great job. I, I may not get the complaints, I only get the atta boys, and it should go the other way, right? I only, today, received many different, you know, good jobs, and congratulations to the village for how well they did their snow removals. So just congratulations, Ralph, and good job again, you and your board. Thank you.
All right, great. Okay, no board reports, staff reports. Ralph, you have something for us?
Thank you, mayor. Two quick things. The yard waste program with waste management ends December 4th, 5th, and 6th for our town. So make sure.
If you can get those leaves from underneath the snow.
Get those leaves rigged up, that four inches of snow we got last night, and get them out to the curb so they can get picked up. And mentioning the snow, snow removal, you know, as residents, we pay to have the snow removed from the street. It doesn't make much sense for us to put it back into the street. So shovel your driveways and put it to the parkway. Don't throw it back into the street because you've already paid for that to be removed from the street. So something pretty simple. It eliminates some safety issues when the people throw the big, large boulders out into the street. You don't want to be dodging those. So yeah, that's all I got for today.
Okay, thanks, Ralph.
Sure.
And Ralph, do you want to just make mention of the odd-even program one more time, in case we have to implement it on the parking?
Sure, odd-even, you know, on odd days, you can park on the odd side of the street. It has nothing to do with your address. On odd days, you can park on odd side of the street, and even days, you can park on the even side of the street, and we plow the opposite side that day. So we clear the curbs, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Ralph.
Sure.
Chief?
Thank you, mayor. Lamont residents may notice some less than clean-shaven police officers during the holidays. Members of the police department are participating in a national program called No Shave November again this year, which is an annual event involving the growing of beers and mustaches to raise awareness for cancer. So participating officers have to make a donation to be allowed, to be excused from the uniform grooming appearances, and all proceeds will be matched by the Lamont Police Benevolent Fund and donated to a Lamont family who is currently battling cancer. Just to give you an idea, last year, we raised over $7,000 for a Lamont family. So anybody wishing to donate to this event can drop off a check at the police department, make it to attention, Dan Dykshorn, and out to the Lamont Police Benevolent Association with No Shave November in the memo section. That will make sure it gets included in. It was a good, good cause, and you see the folks, that's what, they have a lot of beers and.
All right, all right. All right, chief, thanks. And again, it's a great cause, and appreciate the money you guys raise. Next up, I don't, I think, any new business or unfinished business? Anything? We will not have an executive session. Obviously, we have a Committee of the Whole after this, so with that being said, need a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by trustee Blatzer, seconded by trustee Maher. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, motion approved. Okay, so we'll have the Committee of the Whole, we're just gonna, are we gonna go down and rearrange?